All right, we'll call to a word of the regular meeting of Tracy City Council for Monday, September 25th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for the invocation, Pastor Thor.
As I considered what to share and what to pray for with the city council, I thought of one of my favorite personal Bible verses, which is in the first chapter of James, verses two through five. The word says, "Consider it pure joy, my brothers and sisters, whenever you face trials of many kinds, because you know that the testing of your faith produces perseverance. Let perseverance finish its work, so that you may be mature and complete, not lacking in anything. If any of you lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously to all without finding fault, and it will be given to you." Let's pray. Almighty Father, we pray for your help in our city. We pray for your work to be done here. We pray that you would give us all wisdom that is beyond ourselves. We pray that in the way we conduct ourselves and in the way we communicate with each other, that you would give us hearts that are filled with love, filled with understanding of each other, and that, Lord, you would bless everything that we do, that you would use our city to please you. And God, just thank you, and I pray that you would be here in this meeting for the city council tonight. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All right, next is approval of the minutes from our meeting on September 11th and then the meeting that we had on the 19th. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
A couple corrections on the minutes of working group. Page two, last paragraph, fourth line from the bottom, should be the word, should be word main instead of mail. And then on the regular council meeting, on the second page, second paragraph, space for the conclusion of the council meeting, space to discuss it, ask me, those are the only things I found. Other than that, I approve, approve the minutes as amended.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, any additions or deletions to the agenda as has been presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Before we get to the public comment period, Val, do you want to give your department head report, so you don't have to stick around and...
Thank you, sorry for being late, I had to lock up.
That's all right, that's all right.
Just a real quick update, we had a really good turnout for our Curious George event over Boxcar Days, and I think we're going to do something similar next year, we're really happy with how that turned out. And working on the state construction grant, I'm hoping to be able to submit that by Friday. And just another note, that John's time with experience works is done, and so we had a little party for him to thank him for all that he's done over the past four years. Any questions?
Any questions, Ravel? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next we'll have the public comment period. If there's anyone from the public that would like to say something to the council, step up to the podium, state your name, address, and you will have five minutes each.
My name is Rosemary Martin, I live on Craig Avenue. I am very disappointed in the leadership shown on this council by the lack of action to follow the plan set forth in March to end the problems with the council and the city administrator. Why was this plan not followed? If these working meetings are to continue, we the citizens request that the minutes be taken at these working meetings as city business is decided before the council meetings and voted on at the council meetings. The problem was overreached by Tony Peterson. Peterson continued, he continued to overreach his authority, and this finally resulted in Madonna Peterson leaving, as she could no longer work under those conditions. It would seem that part of the problem is that Bill Chukuski failed to see the problem and dismissed it as hearsay. We were all here together in this same room when the meeting was documented. That is not hearsay. In the first four years on the council, Tony Peterson was counseled by his peers on the city council at close meetings for his behavior. That is public record, that is not hearsay. Tony Peterson had the application sent to a mailbox outside of the city office in the hiring of the last city administrator. That is a matter of public record. Tony has gone to our city office and behaved in a hostile manner towards Madonna Peterson. This can be substantiated by city workers and members of our community. This is not hearsay. In spite of the mayor's efforts, Tony Peterson continued to create a hostile environment for Madonna Peterson. That is not hearsay. That can be substantiated. I have served on the planning and zoning since August of 2012, and since Tony Peterson has come to the planning and zoning, there are times when he has been hostile towards me and behaved like a bully. One such time was about signs that I discovered were not used appropriately and as per the ordinance, but it was discovered that the signs used at the Eagles that Tony Peterson put up for the Eagles events were also not per the ordinance. When it brought this to Tony's attention, he was above reproach and continued to put the signs out until they were finally removed for safety reasons. When Tony Peterson was confronted with the double standard, his response was to propose a new ordinance to have all rentals inspected, and when asked how he would pay for this, he stated he would have the volunteer fire chief inspect, and they would start with apartment buildings. Who do you think that was directed at? This is the type of bullying Tony Peterson does on a continued basis. This is not hearsay. This can be substantiated. At the last planning and zoning meeting, it was decided by a majority vote to recommend putting up two stop signs on Greenwood Avenue at Adam Street, per request of the citizens in that neighborhood regarding safety concerns. The cost of the signs are minimal, but instead Tony Peterson wanted an independent study done at the city expense to study traffic. It is a matter of public record that that is what the city council did, instead of following the recommendation of the majority vote of the planning and zoning. Tony Peterson won't stop at anything to have his way, even when it is not fiscally responsible for the city. We are now just digging our way out of the financial difficulties created when Tony was mayor, but now face more financial difficulties as a result of the efforts of Tony Peterson and others who have saddled the rest of the city taxpayers with their personal, with their special assessments. Possibly conflict of interest? Ever since Tony has been elected to office, he has abused people in his power. Tony is a bully, and has, and needs to be recalled, from the city council of Tracy, Minnesota. I have had a number of people tell me that they are glad that someone has finally taken action. To those who have told me they are not willing to sign the recall petition for fear of reprisal from Tony Peterson, I say, we should all be more worried about what this man, about what this man continuing on the city council. In my career, I have been responsible for hiring and firing of employees. If I had an employee who did their job and did it well, but left me a post-it note that said they could not work under these conditions, I would at least make an attempt to find out what these conditions are. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and just so everybody knows too, we got a public hearing at 6:45 and also at 6:50. So if somebody wants to go up for the next five minutes, they can, it's going to be at 6:45, we have to stop.
And then we get to continue?
Yeah, I just got to stop people because we got public hearings.
Okay. I'm Shirley Anderson, and I live on Randall Street in Tracy, Minnesota. And the first thing I want to say is, if you would have let the community speak on September 19th, you would have known that some of the citizens did not want you to accept the city administrator's resignation. You can correct this now by rescinding your vote of accepting her resignation. And also, at that time Pam did not vote, she was silent. Someone needs to find out exactly what was going on that led to Madonna's note of not being able to work under these conditions, and see if the situation can be rectified, so our city administrator wouldn't have to feel she was working in a hostile work environment. She did and has done nothing wrong on the job. Before she left on vacation, she even completed the budget for next year, except for the councils going over it and making a few changes. It was complete. Madonna has always been very conscientious of fulfilling her job duties. Our city administrator was the one who was going by the rules, regulations, and ordinances that a city is supposed to follow. At times, she did try to direct the city council members in this regard, but sometimes she was not listened to, or some members just continued to disregard her. Our city administrator was the most honest person we have had in this position. Her knowledge of the job is uncomparable. There was recently a three-month evaluation system initiated for our new city administrator, and in my opinion, it was not so much an evaluation, but a way to chastise her and give her direction on how to do her job the way some people thought she should be doing it. It also had the effect of keeping her scared and insecure about her job. Madonna knows how to do her job, and if she would have been given the support from the city council and the department heads, she would have succeeded. Why aren't the department heads reporting to the city administrator? She is their boss, yet they are reporting to the city council. It's fine to update the city council and the public at council meetings as to what's going on by the departments, but they should not be bypassing the city administrator. There are some people in the town that think because of who they are or what their position is, they can do anything or say anything, and nothing will happen to them. Be forewarned, this is a small town. People talk, and your behavior will be known. Our citizens need to get together, start talking, and start protesting against these kinds of people who think they can run this town alone. Another issue are these so-called closed meetings. Our citizens need to know what that is all about. I do believe some of these closed meetings and business to discuss personal issues is against the ordinances. Every council member should be, or should have been, supporting our city administrator, but some have their own agenda and are working against her. And the mayor should have kept abreast of these problems, and if need be, reprimanded or sanctioned individuals who are overstepping their authority. This kind of behavior needs to be stopped and reined in. This hostile work environment should have been taken care of long before it got to this point. I want to say again, let's see if the council can regain some integrity and leadership by working and solving what is inhibiting our city administrator from doing her job, and also now rescinding the acceptance of that resignation. Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Okay, we're gonna have the public hearing for, we got 7:00 a.m., the vacation of a portion of Sixth Street East. Shane, you want to give a quick rundown what this is for again?
So the application, we have an application to, to the planning commission to vacate a portion of Sixth Street East, and this portion is from Sunrise Drive going north to Union Street. It's planted, but it's not improved as far as development, so I guess the request is to vacate that portion of the, of Sixth Street East to put up a buildable residential lot.
Anybody here from the public want to comment on that vacation request for Sixth Street East?
Does this comply with our city plan, is my question? Is this compliant with the street length and the cul-de-sac ordinance? And does this impair city work and city workers and fire and fire truck access? That would be my question. Once it's gone, it's gone.
That's a good question, actually, in the question prior to the meeting, I believe you're referring to section 3.2 of the ordinance, and that deals with planning plaits?
Right.
Since this is already a planned platte established, those applicable ordinances wouldn't apply, so the vacation would not be violating any ordinance, so it complies with all ordinances and state law.
Okay, my question would be too, how does that work out for the city work? Does it create issues for you guys?
That road is tough, no matter what, you know, what length it is. The biggest problem there is to turn around at the end, especially in the winter time. So I guess that's hard, from our standpoint.
But that problem would exist regardless of whether or not...
Yeah.
But if there was a street that went through, you would not have that problem any longer?
Not if it had to turn or have a cul-de-sac on the end.
Right, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else?
One question, does the unplanted street go from Sunrise Drive to only Union Street, or does it also go north to what would be the extension of State Street?
It stops at Union Street.
Okay, so there's no platted street from State behind the nursing home to Union?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Justin Struken, I live on Sunrise Drive. I don't really have anything against properties being built down that section, it's quite a ways away from me, it's a few blocks away. But one of the concerns I have is, is that turning around, like you're talking about, any, the garbage and the recycling both right now, come down, it's about 3:00 in the morning, so it's not a time that everybody's seeing them, but right now they're going along collecting all the garbages, and they're backing all the way out that whole section. So I guess from my point of view, and then also busing, there's not, I don't think there's a single bus that comes down there, because there isn't a way to turn around. Not that there isn't a solution, we're about a block away from where they, where they pick up. However, future plans kind of could put a hinder on that, depending on who lives down at that section and how far they have to go to get to the bus. And then along with any other deliveries, things like that, it's, it's a challenging place that we have right now. So I guess from my point of view, I would really like to see the planning committee or the EDA come up with another solution for being able to turn around, whether it's a cul-de-sac or something, before we pursue vacating.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing portion of that is closed, and we'll refer back to the council. Anybody have any questions or comments? Bearing in mind, we have another one in two minutes.
How will we do that street when we make it?
Turn around, whatever you're thinking. You could, to create a cul-de-sac, you essentially would have moved probably for a half circle on your side, depending upon how big you want to create that, as a possibility.
Didn't we have that discussion though, when we gave the vacation for the Gramstead property of what to do down there? And it was discussed on cul-de-sacs, and discussed on snow removal and access, and I don't remember, I can't remember exactly what we came up with for a solution. I want to say that they would take care of that portion of the road that was unimproved. I'll have to go back in the minutes and find out, but I think that's what it is.
Would, could there be just a turnaround, the drive right, put right there, Shane, it's gravel anyway right here, where they could just back in and then go back out again?
I guess, if there's a radius there, I mean, you could probably do it with the houses, you know, even where the houses are now. It's just, you know, once you're about to land go, then you'd have to, if you want to put one in later, then you're buying from the farmer for weeds, so.
Which we would be anyway, but I mean, I'm just thinking if you talk to the property owners, if you just had a, it's all gravel anyway, gravel, like driveway here and here, we're just enough for a truck to pull in, back up, and go back around?
Yeah, you know, you would have room. You know, I don't know what the plan is.
Or even just to make a circled gravel, even if, I mean, it's not going to be tarred anyway.
It'd be nice if you could make some kind of it, especially if you ever have school buses or something going on there.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Who's talk, I can't see, well, go ahead and just go up to the, just state your name.
I'm Shawna Davis, and I'm the transportation director for the Tracy Bus Service, and Sunrise Drive is a problem. We do not pick up down in that area because we cannot get a bus turned around. Currently, we pick up at the corner of Union and East Third. So in consideration of all the families that are moving out into that area, it would be great if you could make a turnaround big enough to run a bus down there, because it is quite a distance for the kids to walk. They can't walk across the yards to Union, and they can't walk into the fitness center parking lot to get to the bus. So if any of them ride, they have to walk completely down Sunrise to Third Street and then back out to Third and Union. So it doesn't create a problem for busing, and if there's a lot of children out in that area that need to ride the bus eventually, then let's plan ahead and make it easier, you know, in the future for families to move out there.
Is there a cul-de-sac in town, Shawna, that you can turn your bus around in at all?
We can turn around in circle. It's tight, but we can do it.
And that's the biggest cul-de-sac there is, and I don't think, yeah, just...
Yeah, yeah. But we don't want to be backing buses up in, in a cul-de-sac either, for fear of backing into somebody's, you know, vehicle or mailboxes or anything like that, so be sure to, you know, plan ahead that there's going to be families moving out there, and the kids' safety going to a bus stop is what we're going to need.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, let's still discuss that, because we got to do the other public hearing for ordinance number 361 to amend and replace the city code to prohibit stormwater, surface water, or groundwater to discharge into the sanitary sewer system. And Shane, do you have a little rundown for that?
It's the biggest change here is, right now, there's no ordinance stating that you have to connect into the stormwater interceptors for the some pumps and rough drains, I guess, whatever you want to run into it. So the reason behind it is the, you know, once that's available, to discharge water out into the streets and, you know, cut out the new asphalt in these newer constructed streets, it'll kind of eliminate that damage to the, to the asphalt by changing this to required to go into the stormwater receptors if they're available to that lot. That's pretty much the...
And it also, if I remember right, what we discussed at the planning commission, it also allows, by the city mandating that, that just like any water line repair, whatever, where they say go and take care of it, and then the resident pays it back on their, so those are the two issues.
Okay. Anybody here from the public that want to talk about that? All right, refer back to the councils, anybody got any questions or comments about that Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt it?
I'd make the motion.
Second? Motion made in second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's go back to the vacation and of Sunrise. So what's, we can or we cannot put something what's existing there for a turnaround?
You can.
You'd have to get easements from those two end lots, but it probably be done. Yeah, we'd make a motion that we vacate that, that lot, and then work with the landowners to figure out a way to be able to turn vehicles around in there.
Should we have the, should we have the landowners okay before we do that, though?
They...
That's a separate issue. A vacation is just to vacate that portion of land between Union and Sunrise, and if the city wants to develop some access to ease that turnaround, the city can do that by negotiating with the landowners to survey out the appropriate circle or cul-de-sac to accomplish that.
If you would, Shane, go back through the minutes for what we, because I know this discussion came up when we vacated the other half of the street for Gramsteads, and we talked about cul-de-sacs and turnarounds and, and all of that, so get that, find out what we hashed out and come up with, and then there's, you know, turnaround is a big thing, there's got to be an option that the property owners out there can, and the city can come to an agreement on, but...
So to clear that up, do you want us to look and see if we made any agreement with Gramstead as far as...
Or what the agreements were, because I know the discussion was there.
Okay, as far as putting in...
As far as the snow removal, busing, cul-de-sacs, it was all, it was in the minutes on, when we vacated that first half.
Okay.
See what we come up with there, and then see what we can work out.
Okay, so a motion is made in second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, let's go back to the public comment period, anybody else from the public want to talk about something?
I'm Rhonda Fredericks, and I live on Park Street. I've never been so angry with the council as I am right now. I'm losing respect for you. I know there's one person on the council that supported Madonna. We had a city administrator that truly cared for and loved the city. She always followed the statutes and the rules to do what was best for the city, and you did nothing in your, and you did everything in your power to destroy that. You did nothing to support her, but was always quick to criticize her, even bully her. I was on the hiring committee for the city administrator. We weren't supposed to talk about what was discussed there in conversation at that meeting, but in conversations that I've had with several other people, stuff got out about it. So here goes. Tony, not one person on that committee felt that you could do a good job as a city administrator. In your email to Mayor Ferrazano, which I have a copy, you criticized him for having a secret meeting with Tara and Madonna. Several people questioned you, Bill, and Jeff Solomons as secret meetings. You blamed Madonna for things that past administrators such as Roger Goryous didn't do his or their job. The utility rate increase, when she asked for help, the council said no. But the council had no problem wanting to spend about $60,000 for one resident. Concerning the Liptke lots, where does EB's A responsibility come into play for not following through on their part? Easier to blame Madonna. And once again, former city, and, excuse me, I have copies of statements from different people right here, that you had gone into city offices, the city office, and basically yelled at her, and there were things that she had no, anyway. And Bill, it's pretty much public knowledge why you were removed from the EDA, and your actions caused a $5,000 fine for the city of Tracy in the Orchard Lane case. I want to know why someone with a terrible temper and threatened to physically harm Madonna or other people are allowed to stay on the EDA. I'm not the brightest bulb on the tree, but even I know that if businesses are thinking about coming to Tracy, they will read paper, watch council meetings, see how things are handled, and when they see how things are handled, they're not going to consider Tracy. And this happened a few times, there have been businesses where they've seen it, they've not chose Tracy. Just think of what that would mean for our city residents and businesses and the schools. You say Madonna wasn't doing her job? What other city administrator would make sure the budget was done before she left the council? Watch the council meetings, disrespect. Our city was not being held back by Madonna. Our city was, is being held back because of you, the council. So put your big girl panties on, put away your egos, and start doing what is right for Tracy, not you. Women really do have great minds. I think that as citizens of Tracy, you, we should demand that you rescind your acceptance of Madonna's resignation and talk to her. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm Vera Anderson and I live on Randall Street with my daughter. I have lived my entire life in Tracy except for twenty years spent in Monro. Moved back to Tracy. I just cannot believe that this has gone on this long, nothing's been done about it. So I seriously am thinking, I am a lady of ninety years of age, but I know I can do a better job on the council than some of these people doing this harassing. I think something should be done. It would be terrible if I would have to take someone's place. I do have the mental ability to do it. But to tell you the truth, I don't have the time because I'm enjoying myself. And think about it, when you're busy pointing the finger at someone else, think about it. You've got three of those fingers pointing at yourself. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nancy Garros from Tracy Street and I had no intentions of getting up here tonight. But I want you to know, I have lived here almost seventy years and I have never been so ashamed of my town as I am right this minute. We are a laughing stock. People from other towns look at us and they laugh at us. Because what is going on with this town? Is there no respect anymore for Tracy, for the people in it? And Tony, I, what, what's your agenda? I'm not sure. Do you want to be administrator? Is that what you're after? I don't know that. I don't know what you're trying to do. But I feel bad that there are all these people sitting here and no one can make a decision that is the correct one. And I feel sorry for your families and for everybody in this town that has to watch what goes on.
Anybody else?
Cam Shawns, eight nineteen North Third Street. My only question is, when or how did we decide on doing a three-month review for somebody when it's not been that way in the past? And nobody else in a position in the city has those same requirements? So that's my question.
I think you all know me. I'm Madonna's father. And the only thing I have, the things that I've got from her, I think you've really hurt her. And I think I'm very ashamed of this couple. Especially Tony and, I mean, I'm very ashamed of you because she's, she's broken her, she's done the best job she could do. She's down here till eight, nine o'clock at night, every night, working, trying to do the best for the, and I think all the employees can tell you the same thing. They're probably afraid to talk to you, but I've talked to some and they feel the same way. I think you broke her spirit and she said five years ago when, when you guys did it to her, that she'd never let it happen again, but, but she has, she's let it happen again. And I don't, don't agree to that. I don't, I don't think that's right. I think you're better people than that. I'm ashamed of all of you, I really am.
Anybody else?
Can you rescind your vote? It's a question.
And as you know, with the public comment period, we just take the questions, we don't answer them. It's not give and take, it's something that we'd have to consider. So we're not gonna answer the question now because we don't do that for the public comment period. But I understand your point. Anybody else? All right. Thank you for coming. All right, let's go to nine A, you got petitions, requests, and communications. We got amend ordinance three forty-seven, consider changing verbiage valid for life of animal, replace with yearly. You got any questions about that?
This will require a public hearing as an ordinance change or? And the reason I ask that is because I've gotten some comments from folks that are not happy with the, going from a lifetime of pet to an annual. And this is, I don't know, needs to be brought up, that they need to come out and express their opinion if it goes on to a public hearing. I, I'm not a pet owner, so I'm not gonna venture an opinion on it. But the other thing to consider on that also is, are you gonna grandfather anybody in under that old system? Or are you gonna make them all go to the new system? And so just changing the verbiage, are we gonna take all that into consideration?
Everything that's done is probably gonna be grandfathered in because, you know, you need to sell them a permanent license.
Yep. But, and I, I didn't read that in here anywhere, that's another reason I'm asking about it, so. Other than that, I mean, make sure we do a public hearing on it. Get their input before we go any further with it.
Anybody got anything else? All right, let's set the date for, yeah, six forty-five.
And who made that motion?
I'll make the motion in the public hearing on October ninth at six forty-five for, to amend that ordinance.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, nine B, set the twenty eighteen levy. We had a session about that last Tuesday. Anybody have any questions about the levy that we're gonna set? They can set the levy at a certain percentage that we can work down, no, and not go up.
What's it at, wait a second.
Fourteen.
You got an idea?
All right. Take your time.
Twelve point seven probably.
Guessing what the percentage is?
Was it twelve point seven?
Twelve point seven, was it?
Twelve point seven, was it?
Yep, twelve point six seven actually.
And the only change is we're putting that fourteen in and, and a couple of other small ones that we discussed.
Yeah, and then the flowers.
Yep, yep, that's all in there.
We may want to bump that up if we're gonna consider, we can always go down, we just can't go back up.
Well, because of the health insurance too, that we don't know where that's gonna be.
Well, we kind of do. Well, don't go by, don't go by that.
No, 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 I'm, I know it's anecdotal, but I mean, it's not gonna be cheap.
Well, we don't know that, you're comparing apples to oranges.
It was just, that's just for information, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it'd be that high or not, but it's something to consider.
Well, you've got two different sets. You got, you got groups that are in these service cooperatives and then you've got groups that are not and they're part of the statewide, small group and individual pool, so that, yeah, you can't, you can't go by that.
All right, so it's twelve what?
Twelve, twelve point six seven.
And we don't have any idea when we get to health insurance figures.
Couple more weeks at least, I think.
Well, what, uh, knowing that we can work down and if the figures for the health insurance are fine, because there's things in there I think we can get rid of, like we talked about, that fourteen thousand dollars that we put back in, I don't think we need to, to levy for that because I don't think we need to put that back in there. What if we just did like fifteen? Knowing for sure that we would work way down below that? Does that work just in case that, uh, the health insurance premiums, we don't get shocked when we see them? Even though we're probably gonna be anyway?
Well, but even that, I, there's nothing saying that the city's real, is liable for that. So I mean, that's just one of the considerations with, because then you got negotiations to go through with all that too. So I don't think you should take that into, I, I think fifteen would be.
The only problem with that, um, that would change your resolution with the dollar figures in it, eleven D. Um, that levy's based, based on that twelve point six seven, so. This'll have to be, um, accepted tonight, this resolution, because this is due September thirtieth. We're counting for the preliminary levy, so.
Well, let's just accept that, we'll be able to work it out. Yeah, I think we'll be able to work it out if we do that. All right, is there a motion? Go ahead, Tony?
Yeah, I've got no problem with that.
You want to say something, which one?
The one. I would make a motion to, I would make a motion to accept the resolution. Twenty seventeen seventy-five, set the levy as twelve point seven percent increase for a total levy of one point two, three, four, seven, seven, six.
Second. Motion made in second, any other discussion?
So you'll take care of getting that filed?
Yep.
Okay.
And to meet, a couple of council members meet with each department head and go through the numbers before we get together again and make some, I know they're willing, so.
All right. We got a motion in seconded. All in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, then nine, nine C, to set the truth in taxation date for December eleventh, twenty seventeen. Do we have a time in there? I think it's, I think we have to have a time in there, don't we? Six forty-five?
You know, we could do it.
Yes.
We could do it at six, can't we? Or is it six forty-five already in there?
I'll just do six forty-five. Because it's a regular, yeah, that's the only meeting we would have in December.
Yeah, that we, if we do it with the, in the working meeting early, oh, I would.
Yeah, let's, six forty-five would probably be easiest. Do we have a motion to set it for December eleventh at six forty-five?
Second.
Motion made in second, any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, next we got nine D, appoint Shane as interim city administrator. Any questions about that? We have a motion to appoint him as an interim city administrator.
I'll make the motion to appoint Shane as interim city administrator.
Motion made in second, any other discussion?
Shane, you're okay with that? Good.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. Nine E, additional compensation as a result of additional duties for Shane. What did we do last time?
Two thousand a month. Each, and I'd be fine with just doing two thousand again.
You say it like.
Two thousand? I'd make that motion to increase compensation for those duties in the interim for two thousand a month.
Motion made in second, is there any other discussion?
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
So do you actually put in more hours or is it just, like, it does that, right? Okay. I just want that out there. Okay.
All right. All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. Nine F, Masonic Lodge lease, and we had a discussion in the working session that, uh, the Masonic Lodge would be all right with leasing rooms on the second floor here for five hundred dollars a year.
I'd, I'd make a motion to continue the current lease at five hundred a year.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. Nine G, appoint Krista Vanden-Richey. Dir.
D R, um.
For motor vehicle?
Yep. Madonna's currently appointed that position. It's appointed every year, so.
Okay.
You know exactly what it means, the D R.
I don't need to know what it means, as long as it ain't the word dir.
It's deputy something registered.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's for the licensing.
Yep, okay.
I'll make that motion.
Seconded.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion?
Krista, you okay with that?
I am.
Okay. Okay.
All those in favor? Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right. No legal issues, resolution eleven A, we took care of that. For vacating Sixth Street. Eleven B, we took care of. Eleven C, we got a resolution twenty seventeen seventy-four, levying a property tax for the support of the infrastructure replacement reserve fund. Anybody have any questions about that?
My question is on how the resolution's written. It's got the total. It says the city of Tracy intends to levy a property tax total on all real property within. It's only the four dollars a month or four dollars a year is what it came to that total with, if I remember right.
Per parcel.
Okay, so it'd be per parcel, where this reads like it's, everybody's gonna get whacked to fifty-three.
No.
Okay. I just want, I want to make sure that's not the case, I didn't believe it to be, but, so. That's the four dollars a year on, you know, each parcel for sewer and infrastructure improvement funds, so. Yep.
Well, that's a good question because everybody's gonna get fifty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, I read that and I went.
We'd fill that up pretty quick, that's.
I know what we, what we meant, but that isn't what we said, so. I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty seventeen to seventy-four.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. All right, so we got resolution adopting the proposed budget and tax levy for twenty eighteen. Do we have a motion to adopt that?
I'll make the motion to accept resolution twenty seventeen seventy-five. Second.
Motion made in second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. Eleven E, we got a resolution to approve payment to Dunick for work completed on twenty seventeen Phase One infrastructure improvement. And Chris, you approve that there?
Yep, I recommend approval. It'll be a payment of three hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. Um, and thus far, we're retaining, uh, almost eighty-one thousand, so five percent of the work completed until final acceptance.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries. We got, um, the consent calendar, we got the municipal counts payable, the municipal counts receivable, the multipurpose center minutes from August twenty-one, twenty seventeen, the library board minutes from August ten, twenty seventeen, and the department. Anybody have any questions or comments about the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any other discussion? All those in favor with. All those in favor of adopting the consent calendar signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Unfinished business, we've got falsity-wide cleanup, which is this Saturday at 9 o'clock. Hopefully, it doesn't rain. In need of volunteers. Any number you have in mind? As many as you can get.
Now, we have one, so I'll be there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there. So, I guess if anyone in the public's interested, talk to Diane, she has a sign-up sheet. Otherwise, if someone's here, I can write it down, so...
Are we doing the same as we did last time, collect the fees in the liquor store?
Sandy will be available for collecting fees. We'll do that the same way.
Okay. New business, nothing. Mayor, Council of Communications, everybody from the council have anything that they want to discuss?
Where do we discuss? Are we going to discuss about Madonna's resignation? Or not?
We can. My initial thought is that if that's the case, then she needs to send something to us saying that she doesn't, wants to rescind what she's doing. Because as of right now, we just have the posted note. So, I mean, I appreciate everyone's comments, but until there's something from her in writing, there's nothing to act upon. That's my opinion. What you want to talk about, we can, but I mean... Not? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Seconded. Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Meaning adjourned.